Pat, if you want to start your little spiel first.
So being Wednesday, December 1st, 2021 at 6:30 PM and having Quorum, I'll open the Bridgewater Planning Board meeting with us. So we're still operating under the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and imposing strict limitations on other people that may gather in one place. There is no in-person attendance of the members of the public of this meeting. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time. The meeting is being recorded within 48 hours. We'll post a link of the recording on the town's website and or social media page. The following members of the planning board are participating remotely. I'm Patrick Fisk, the chair. Mr. Michael McDonald, the vice chair, is not with us this evening. Mr. Raymond Dejamian, Mrs. Jean Garino, the clerk, Mr. Stephen Geller, and our associates are not with us this evening as well. Ms. Astrid Rojas and Mrs. Julia Santacangelo. During the meeting, all votes of the board will be taken to roll calls. We don't have any public hearings this evening, so there won't be any vote on projects or anything, but we do have the following town staff with us participating remotely. Mrs. Jennifer Deboberian, the community economic development director, and Mrs. Jasmine Farinacci, the assistant town planner. At this point, everyone's mic is muted. The board's mics will be unmuted through the whole meeting. The items appear on the agenda. The project's representatives' mics will be unmuted. If a project is a public hearing, if you don't have any tonight, in the last public comment, we ask that you use the chat feature to ask your question by listing your name and address and your question. We'll recognize you in order. You can also use the raise my hand feature in the participant menu. You'll be unmuted when the chair recognizes you. Again, please state your name and address before asking any questions. If you're on the phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. So the first item on the agenda is called to order. The next item on the agenda is public hearings. We have none. The third item on the agenda is the comprehensive master plan presentation by Barrett Planning Group. So I guess the way this will work, Mr. Deboberian, because I know it's a presentation, we can have the Barrett Planning Group present their master plan. We can then have the board ask questions as Barrett, if they want to break up the sections or just at the ends, and then we can open up the public comment. And then we avoid business after that. So if everybody's all set, we can turn it over to town staff or the Barrett group.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have something clarified first.
Go ahead, Mr. Jimmy.
First of all, I just, I tried to go through this and whoever would have, since we just got this, I believe, I was out Monday. I just got this yesterday. I would prefer to see some, to have this given to us in written format, in other words, not online. As much as I realize reading things online are are the way to do it now, would have been easier, I think, at least for me, to go through this if we had a packet with the written proposal. But the main question I have is that in reading this, and maybe it's my ignorance, it points out in the introduction that the approval body is the planning board. And that the, at the end, it says that the planning board is to report to the council on an annual basis or on a regular basis as to how the report's being implemented. My question is, is that the procedure that we're going through? And if so, I noticed that nobody on the planning board was in the group that actually brought this proposal forward. I'm just wondering what, give me some background to this, if somebody could.
Do you want me to take that one, Pat?
Sure.
So yes, that is the process, is that the planning board does approve the document, and it's the planning board's master plan, and that they do annually, should annually report to the council on the implementation and where the implementation of the plan stands. When Michael Dutton and I were setting up the committee to work with Barrett Planning Group on this project, we felt that we would not put a member of the planning board on the committee deliberately because you were the approval authority. We wanted to keep that separate, and we figured the whole planning board would have an opportunity to weigh in and comment throughout the process. You had received this document previously in a Dropbox link as well. I think the only thing that's changed since you received it last was the implementation plan, chapter eight. And Alexis or Judy can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's correct. So that was our thought process regarding the committee.
Well, guys, so I printed, so if Ray needs to print them off, I can print them off from, but that's, but my, my-
Certainly print a copy in the office and get it-
My, my, the first time I saw the plan itself, like the 261 pages, was Monday. The last thing we got was basically the recommendations, correct? We never, we never had the master plan itself until Monday.
No, no, I can, well, I saw Alexis, can you address that? I thought they had seen it.
Yeah, sure. So, yeah, so in the spring, we had a draft posted with the content of the chapters. We did not have the implementation portion in the plan at that time. It was posted, I know it was posted on the department's website and shared through a Dropbox link. So I'm not sure, you know, and there had been, I'm going to talk about this tonight, there have been light edits since what was shared in the spring because of some public comments that we had received, including from a planning board member and some staff as well, so.
And I do know that some planning board members did attend several of the public workshops and things like that as well.
I would just recommend in the future that written copies begin from the office to each planning board member. And the procedure that is being used be expressed to the planning board, since we are the approval body. That's all.
It's fine. I believe at the beginning of this process, we had a meeting where we outlined the process, but if I'm mistaken, I apologize.
So when was the last meeting we had on this, just to clarify?
I'd have to look back, Pat. I don't know if it's on my-
With the planning, sorry, go ahead.
With the planning board.
Yeah, I believe, I believe in, in May, the key strategies and goals were presented to the planning board. I was not at that meeting, but I believe that's when it was. And then the draft was shared with the public. And then we had the implementation, we had an implementation workshop where we shared recommendations with members of boards and committees earlier this fall and received some feedback from that. So, but the last time the planning board was given a presentation on this would have been in the spring.
So.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question? Is, am I hearing, does the board need more time to review this before we go through?
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm just, so I'm just looking back at my notes.
Sure.
So the last working document we had that I made comments on was dated 9/7/21. So we, the last, the last master plan committee meeting we had was in September.
So that was not just a planning board meeting. Yeah, it was, it was when we had invited members of boards and committees and chairs, including the planning board, to attend.
And that one was where we asked, you asked for comments, and I provided my comments to, to Ms. Burke on 9:30, Mrs. Deboberian, I'm sorry, it still comes up this bracket for doing it.
Same.
On 9:30, but at that time, so just, and I just want to make sure I'm not missing something, because at that time, all we had was like a grid of implementation strategies, and that's what we based our recommendations off of. But I, for the first time, I saw the, the doc, unless I missed something, the first time I saw the 261-page document was Monday.
Okay.
I, I believe, I can go back and double check it. We don't have to get into it right now, but I believe you had a link to it back in May or in the spring, but I can confirm that. But as to Judy Barrett's point, if you, if the board feels they need additional time, you know, we can certainly continue this to another meeting.
Come back, Mr. Chair. The last thing I want to do is make the board feel like you've been, for whatever reason, you know, pressed to try to digest a lot of content here in a couple of days. That was, I don't think anybody's intent, the last thing I'd want to do with a volunteer board, because I happen to be one too. So if it's better for you, we'll come back.
No, I mean, I, so it's up to the board. I rushed through it, and I made, like, I, that I, that when I knew I couldn't get through it, I just went to chapter eight. And I, I noted four additional comments that I had. I think I had like 10 before.
Okay.
And I, six of those I was satisfied with before I still have comments on. If we want to continue, and I can, people can just try to read through it and provide their additional comments now, and then we can have a presentation, or we can do whatever the board wants. I mean, it's, it's up, Ray, Mr. Jimmy, and what are your thoughts? What do we think?
Well, I guess my first thought is, what's the intent of tonight? Does the intent to go through it and approve it tonight or not?
Oh, no. No. We were just going to present it and then give the next steps about when we would ask for comments and to provide a final draft for the board to consider for approval at a later date.
Well, I like, Chair, I went through this today fairly quickly. I mean, I couldn't digest everything today. And on the service, it looks very good, and I have no problem going through at least part of it tonight. I'm not sure we can get through the whole thing. I just wanted to know that the process, maybe I missed something in the past, but this is, as the chair said, when I looked at it Monday, it was the first time I saw the complete document, so. So I'm willing to go through part of it. I just don't, I'm not ready to approve tonight, so that's all.
Well, in fact, I can tell you, and I think one of these comments might have made it to you. I hadn't seen the full document at all, so I was just looking at the implementation, and I actually looked at Mansfield's, which I don't know if was done by your firm or another firm, and I commented on how well done it was. And I think I sent that comment to Mrs. Deboberian, because I was hoping that when we finally did get the full document, it would, it would look something like that, which it does. So the first time I, unless I, like I said, I may have missed something. The first time I saw the full document was Monday.
Okay, I think I know, you know, when we produce these things, and I can tell you the same thing happened in Mansfield, because we're all like getting to this point where you're trying to do a nice-looking document. But the first round of documents don't look that pretty, because you know you're going to be making a lot of edits. So I'm not sure when you last saw something, but we're at the point now where we will be making something look more like more, a more appealing layout, so it's fine. We would always do that anyway.
So what, what was your plan?
So I think, I think what we came into this assuming was that you folks had, were very familiar with the chapters of the plan. And that what we were going to focus on tonight was here, it's kind of a policy framework for implementing this plan, and here are actions that the town would need to do to implement the plan. And, and kind of how complicated some of those actions might be, so you could schedule them. And I think that the member who brought up the question about, you know, the board's responsibility versus the council, I think there probably is a recommendation in there about having some kind of an annual discussion about the plan, and that might take place with the council, because frankly, once the planning board, and this is true in any town, by the way, I'm Judy Barrett, so I haven't introduced myself. Once the planning board approves a master plan under state law, then people go off to implement it, and it could be implemented by staff, it could be implemented by the community preservation committee, or by the finance committee, or the council. Different people have roles in implementing a master plan. So every time we start one of these projects, somebody in the room says, how do we keep this from sitting on a shelf? And one of the things we recommend to prevent that from happening is that there's some kind of an annual discussion that takes place initiated by the planning board, but with the council that, you know, sort of controls the appropriations and with town staff and the town manager for what are we going to do this year on master plan implementation? So I think that's where that's coming from, right? It's like, it's about moving on now from adopting the plan. Now you have these recommendations that need to be implemented. Who's going to do what?
So just reading through it, I still don't, and just as one member, I don't agree with some of the recommendations, so I wouldn't want to implement them, right? So there are some that I wish were in that. So, and I just, I'm looking back, I, I just looked back quickly, and I think maybe part of the confusion is there's this big pause because of COVID with this whole process.
Oh, yeah.
And we had started it, and then there was this big lag, almost a year lag, I think, where we actually met and went over things. So I'm wondering if, you know, I know we have people from the public here that may want to make, make comments on this, and they haven't even seen it, and we're seeing it, we've seen it for 48 hours. Do you think it's best for us to read it over the next two weeks, provide you with additional comments, post it, so that the public can print it off, look at it? The public can be prepared for the meeting, so they can ask questions, and then we can have a productive meeting instead of, you're going to present stuff tonight, we may have questions that we don't know we have questions on that you may skip over? Is that what you would recommend? Have you recommended we go forward?
The most important thing to me is that when you are ready to have a public meeting about this, that you don't feel like you've just been handed something 48 hours in advance. I'm not blaming anybody. I don't know what happened. I'm just saying, if that's the way you feel, you don't want to have a public meeting about this tonight. So I agree that you should have the time, take a couple of weeks to read. We can come back and do this a little bit later when you have a greater comfort level. And, you know, Mr. Chair, I think that there may be recommendations in there that you don't agree with. Maybe somebody else on the planning board does agree with them. We don't know right now. So, you know, we kind of want to get to that point. And there also, just if I can make this comment too, there may be some things in there that somebody commented on earlier on that we didn't change. And we may not have changed it because we did more homework, and it looked like what we were being asked to change wasn't factual. Or, or it was something that if we changed it, it really became very inconsistent with the rest of the plan. So I, I think probably 99% of the comments we got were addressed, but there may be a few in there that we didn't. And so I just don't want anybody to feel insulted or that they weren't heard. It's kind of what you do in this process. You try to address all the comments that you can. And if there's something we missed, naturally, we want to hear that. I, I'm not trying to pull the rug out from under anybody tonight. I just don't want the planning board at this important juncture in the process to feel like you got to rush through this this evening. I don't want to do that to you.
So I have a question for you, just, just as an example, right? So I would like to see mixed use downtown. In the central business district, where we have it, it's encouraged in the plan.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. So.
We would like to, too.
But I have a real problem with expanding mixed use into plan development and other commercial zones, because essentially, we'd then be giving up more commercial land to potentially 50% or 70% residential. And I think that commercial is very important in the town and seems to be, so, so that seems like it kind of goes against our goal of developing more commercial property. And then if I look at, then if I look at your outline of lands, and we're trying to get to this 20% or 30% commercial ratio, you hear different numbers in town, and we only have 10% commercial land, and then we're looking to give up other commercial land to more mixed use outside of the central business district. To me, that's just inconsistent with, it may be consistent with the plan, but it seems inconsistent with what we're trying to do in town. So I, that's one thing that I would like to see removed, but I don't, I don't, that's just one thing that I picked up today. I'm like, this is in here. And then looking at your land space table, where you actually break down the number of acres of commercial versus residential, and the huge disparity between the two. And then we're saying in the next page, we're saying, let's, let's grow the commercial base, and then we're saying in the next page, let's, let's look to develop the plan development district to mixed use. And I'm like, it's already 80% mixed use. It's already 80% residential, the planned development district. So it's things like that, that, that I, I have made comments on. I still see that they're in there.
Yeah, some of them, some of them are, Mr. Chair, because there's a rationale for it. But I think that, my humble opinion is that the board needs a chance to read this plan, and I, because I think if you read it, now, you may still disagree with the recommendation. I'm not saying you shouldn't. I'm saying that I think if you know what the rationale is, people may feel differently. And then there is a reason why that's still in there, but I don't think we should start picking one recommendation out or another tonight to talk about them when there are many to talk about, and they kind of are supposed to hang together. So I'm not trying to tell you how to run your meeting. I'm trying to help you.
No, no, and I just think, and the reason I want some of these things out of there is I know from sitting in the planning board is, is that if somebody wants a project approved, then we don't want a certain area, they come and they say, well, your master plan says you want this in this area. So it, it, it kind of handcuffs us, and I'm trying, you know, personally, I'd like to see commercials, state commercial and central business to be mixed use. I, I don't, one of the comments was allowing mixed use development locations outside of downtown, including the planned development district under, in other commercial zones. To me, I never want that. I mean, I, I'd like to see straight commercial in those zones, but I don't know how we get beyond that, but.
Well, we could talk about it, but I think that, you know, I guess I would like to know what the board feels is going to be most comfortable for you this evening. What would you like to do?
Has everybody had a chance to look at it? Does everybody want to take a pause and have a chance to digest it, make some comments, or do we want to go forward this evening?
Be honest, I personally would like more time to go over this document.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Last thing I want to, I don't want anybody to feel like you're being hit with a bunch of stuff tonight that you have no context for. That's certainly not our intention.
All right, so could, so could we do, could we do this then?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Deboberian and Mrs. Farinacci, could we post everything that we've received on the town of Bridgewater website, so it's easily accessed by the public? And if somebody needs a copy printed off, could we print off some copies in town hall, let people know when they're ready? And if everybody could get additional comments to you, two weeks from now is the 15th, the 14th?
So I can't be here on the 15th. I actually-
No, 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 I just mean additional comments, so that she can send you, so, so either Mrs. Farinacci or Mrs. Deboberian can send you an email saying this is additional feedback we received. And then sometime in January, you can set up a follow-up meeting.
That's fine. I have no problem with that.
Is that what, Mr. Jimmy and Mr. Geller and Mrs. Greenough?
That sounds good.
I'm fine with it.
Can I ask the board's indulgence for one thing? Can we maybe try to figure out when in January you might want to meet? And the only reason I'm asking that is that my calendar looks like a joke right now, and so I just want to make sure that whatever night you want us here, I could be present.
Our dates are January 5th and January 18th. That are scheduled meetings at this time.
So.
19th, I mean.
18th?
That's a Tuesday.
Oh, is it the 19th? I apologize, Jennifer. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, 5th and 19th.
How does your schedule look the 19th, Mrs. Barrett?
Mrs. Barrett can do that. Barrett's happy to be there that night. Mr. Barrett would probably be thrilled to hear somebody call me Mrs. Barrett instead of Judy, or that woman. So the 19th is fine, Mr. Chair. If that's what works for you.
Is that, is that good with the board? Mr. Jimmy, Mr. Geller, Mrs. Greenough?
Yes. And if we can implement something, it would be nice to call you Mrs. Barrett.
What time, what time works for you? I don't know if you already have a schedule evolving that night or not.
I don't know if we have any public hearings that evening, but we-
I don't believe we have anything scheduled yet, so we could put this right on at 6:30.
Sure. 6:30 then? Is that when you?
That's when we start, unless the board wants to do it earlier.
Yeah, what would you, what, I don't know what you guys do and when you're available. So is 6:30 good for you, or do you want us earlier?
6:30.
Okay. That works. I'm sorry, I didn't, we didn't know, and it's fine, and we've all talked, and I just want you to be comfortable, so.
Oh, no, I, I'm happy with what I saw, but it's just, it was a lot to get through and-
It is a lot.
48 hours, you know what I mean? So, and I know some of it we've seen in different sections, but when you pull it all together and try to read it all, and you know, so, for example, I found, and I don't know if you want this detail, but ownership of open space, I found a couple of errors. One of the schools, one of the, one of the schools was listed twice. So the Mitchell School is listed both, the Mitchell, the elementary school and the middle school are both listed at 166 Mount Prospect Street, but it's because the, what's happening now is the elementary school is using the junior high school, so the square footage of those schools screwed up, and then it's just, it talks about last time renovations were made. So this, if, if we look in the school district section, the Samaras, I know that, I know just because I've been involved in some of the developments and both on the planning board and privately doing stuff and living near one, some of the ownerships of the open space, I know it came from an old study. But I know clearly one of the, like, on Havas Lane, it still lists Charles and St. Carter as the 40, the owner of the 43 acres, when it's actually the homeowners trust. So just going through, seeing things like that. I also saw that some, some parcels weren't listed, but they were on the map. So I don't know if you want that, if you just want policy details, if you want-
We want corrections. You know what? I, it makes me nuts when I hear stuff like this, and I'm not blaming anybody. It's just what happens. You have a data source from the state, you have an assessor's database.
No, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's your fault. Some of them said, some of them said that the, the form was from like the 2013 open space study, you know what I mean? So you guys probably just copied and pasted that.
We may have.
But there were errors on that, on that form that should be updated, so.
We, we want those corrections, sir.
And I, and I just-
Give you a plan with mistakes in it.
I just, I just flew through it, so I can, I'm sure I can find some more stuff.
Okay.
That probably knows who owns every piece in town.
All right, so the board members, we're good with the 18th, the 19th, excuse me, at 6:30?
Yes.
And if we could get everything posted on the town website ASAP, that'd be great.
It'll be posted in the morning, and if everybody has come, anybody has comments, they can get them to me by the end of business on the 15th. Email them to me. I can forward them off to Barrett that day.
The 15th is a Thursday, right?
15th is a Wednesday.
Yeah, and just, just going on record, I would like a hard copy.
We will have, we'll, we'll print it tomorrow, and I'll have someone let you know when it's available.
Okay, thank you.
So to kill two birds with one stone, Mrs. Farinacci, you still need signatures for the 1st street, correct?
You're muted, Justin.
Sorry, yes, that is correct.
Do you want to, I don't know who's coming and who hasn't come in. I can come in tomorrow. I don't need a copy, but in the morning, could you print those copies off? So if people come in to sign that plan, they can also grab a copy?
Absolutely. And yes, I do need more signatures, Pat, so if you could come in, please, that'd be excellent. Thank you very much.
But I didn't know if Ray had to come in for that anyway, if he could grab a copy, why is it?
I did already.
He already did come in. Thank you, Ray, and so did Steve. Thank you, Steve.
Great. I'll bring the storm in tomorrow.
I like it.
So we can let Barrett, the, the folks from Barrett go then, because we're not going to need them this evening.
And I know there's some members of the public on, does anybody from the public have a question or comment at this point?
There is one in the chat. Let me, let me read it. After Hunt has a question. I muted him.
Thank you very much. Nice to see you, Judy and Alexa. I know you've been hard at work. I had hoped tonight we would at least see the action plan, but clearly, that's not, it's probably not wise at the moment, so thank you. The other comment I had is to make sure you did such an excellent job with the comments before and the responses. Is that in the most recent round of comments, do you have that response table?
Yeah, so actually, I'm, I'm glad you asked that. One of the things, oh, I hope I'm unmuted as I'm talking. Yeah, okay. One of the things that I was going to share tonight is what's different in this draft from the version in the spring, and so in the chapters, the, the content from the chapters, we cataloged comments that we received, whether it was on the Dropbox link, if someone left a comment on that, or through email, we've received email comments as well. So we do have all of those catalogued in our responses internally. I, I don't know if I'll have that ready to share with Jennifer for tomorrow, but I'll make sure that the link for the plan is there. But yes, we did catalog every comment we received and, and catalogued our responses to it.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to review that to see.
Oh, sure, of course. Oh, sure, of course.
As you know, I provide extensive comments always, so.
You do, indeed, yes, and, and I think you'll find that they're either accepted, or, or if they're not, there's a reason why, so.
I, that's what I need to know, thank you, thank you guys so much.
That's fine, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Yeah, all right, don't, you know, like, don't take this as a knock or anything, we may have gotten this a long time ago, and just with the gap and everything, we may have forgot about it, so, but I think it's good for everybody that we have the final version, or, or close to the final version to, to look at it, make comments, and not rush through it and just throw things out there.
I, it's fine, I mean, I, I've kind of been in this position once before myself, so uh, I, I'd rather that you have the time to feel comfortable having a conversation with us than to feel like you gotta rush through a bunch of questions tonight, and maybe, you know, end this meeting and say, oh, I wish I'd asked whatever, so it's perfectly fine.
Um, may I screen share for just a moment, just to, I just want to explain um, the, the outline of the plan, um, for those who are newly reading it this evening?
Sure.
Um, or after this evening, um. Just a quick moment. Um, can you see my screen, I'll just.
Yes.
Yeah.
Great. All right, so, um, be, just because I know we had some members of the public tonight, and, and I know that there are some people who, who did read the chapters, because we had received comments on them, so just to give some context about what is new in this document that you wouldn't have seen before. So chapter one, uh, the introduction chapter, it just provides some background about what a master plan is, uh, kind of what the, the framework of the plan was, a background of the community engagement process, um, some other plans that we looked at um, in the development of, of this document, so this chapter one, that is going to be new to you. For all of the content chapters, for those who, uh, if you had looked at um, the spring draft, um, the, the way each chapter is set up, it's uniformly set up with a, a review of existing conditions, and that does get a bit tricky when the plan is, you know, written over a course of length of time, what may have been current when it was written, you know, there, there, there's going to be um, some, some gaps there, but that's precisely why we want uh, comments. Um, and then there's a section in each chapter for challenges and opportunities, and then the goals, policies, and recommendations. So when we um, met with chairs of uh, our members from boards and committees earlier in the fall, um, what had been shown at that time was, uh, we had um, provided some draft recommendations. Um, we got some comments on those, made some changes, and then, so in each section, the point four uh, for each chapter, the goals, policies, and recommendations, those will also be found in chapter eight, all laid out together, um, and, you know, with allocation of timing and responsible parties and whatnot, so I just wanted to just uh, explain that, the, those circled sections, those are what's, what's brand new to the plan for those who have uh, reviewed it before. Um, so just in case you do want to focus your efforts and where to read, that's, that's what's new.
Thank you, Alexis, that's really helpful.
No problem.
You know, and Alexis, I, I do see that, so I guess, I guess over time, we, we did get sections, because I, I, I have sections here, it just wasn't all put together. And then I think, I think I focused on the, the work, the workshop comments from September, and that's where, but now seeing everything tied together, it's it's a lot different, so.
Yeah, it, it does get a, a different look when it's all pulled together as one document, so, um, but, um, all right. So, I, I, I think that's it for us.
Yep, I think so, unless there's anything else you want to ask us while we're still with you.
No, board members, good, all right.
All right, we will see you in January, we look forward to getting your comments uh, right after the fifteenth from, from Jennifer, so that's great, thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have um, board business, just committee reports, directors' reports, any reports from the town staff?
No.
Um, just the um, CPC, I guess the town is looking at, they're interested in buying the um, mobile stations, so they're going to come to CPC.
Okay.
And the library's going to put in some sort, some his historical um, protective measures for historical records.
Jean, did, did I see the library's getting, it, it might not be CPC related, but I see they're getting like carpet, new packing lot, and all that stuff as well?
Yeah, that's not CPC.
But is that happening?
I don't know.
I believe that's correct.
Fixing the driveway where it dips.
All right, any other comments? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We'll do, uh, I think we got three people, um, motion by, was it Ray or? Who's that?
I, I did that, I made the motion.
All right, so motion by Mr. Jemmy, and then Jean speak second, second by Jean.
Okay.
Okay, I'll do the roll call, Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Jemmy?
Yes.
Mrs. Grino?
Yes.
And I mean, yes. All right, good night, everyone.
Good night.